Senator Plagio Leigis? Plagio Leigis?
My head, United States of America. In the State of the Republic, for which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, 天地无边， justice for all.
All right. First thought, let's see your business is the minutes from June. Any board members have any corrections or any, anybody?
I'll make a motion to accept a motion submitted.
I'll second.
Ball in favor?
Aye.
All right, minutes are accepted. Next one is public hearing for 77 Lower Station Road Garrison. Applicant is seeking to construct a 998 square foot accessory structure. You're going to speak for us?
Yes.
Okay. Just identify yourself, I know you've done it before, but so I take it.
I'll introduce everyone that's here too. I'm Annie Menace from Garrison Foundry, the architect on the project. And the clients are here tonight, Charity Shumway and Greg Starnar. And then we have Jason from Beatty and Watson.
Okay, one second, is that mic on?
Jason Snyder.
Okay.
Oh, Jason Snyder from Beatty and Watson, Annie Menace from Garrison Foundry, Charity Shumway, and Greg Starnar, the clients. Yeah, so we, we met with you guys last time for the preliminary meeting and reviewed a little bit about what we're hoping to do. We have Jason's, Beatty and Watson's plan behind me, and then I also have our plans in addition to the copies that you received. So Charity and Greg, actually Greg's family has owned this, it's been in his family for about 30 years, this, this property, and they took it over five years ago, six years ago. They live there full-time with their family, three kids. And they both work full-time. Charity is a writer and Greg is a lawyer, who as many people these days, works from home about 50 percent of the time. And they started this project with the idea, there's a couple precedents on the road where people have small barns outside of their structures, adjacent to their property. And they thought, what a nice idea, we could have a separate area for us to both, both of us work, and then also have more storage because their current home is quite small for some standards. It's about, it's $1,296 on the property card, which they're content with, but they need space to work in. They have, like I said, three kids. So we started looking at this and, and decided it was a great idea for them as a family. So that's where we decided to pursue this idea. And we've located the property, the new structure, excuse me, alongside of the road in what we think is the most economical and least impactful way, both visually and from the grade. As we've noted before, there is a section that is impacted by a steep slope, which is indicated in the yellow. And we are looking at that with the planning board. We had a preliminary meeting with the planning board, and we're meeting with them next week. But the, the idea is really to have a structure for their family. The question might come up if it's something that they would be using to rent out. No, they are not interested in that. It's not pursuant to their interest, and they would never be using it for that purpose. It's really for home office space and probably to have a little overflow space for both storage and just their family to use. It's going to kind of open up to their yard. This is sort of an underli, underutilized area of their yard right now, so it'll access their yard in a better way. And Jason has been working on, before we get too far with all of this, we want to make sure that it's something that could be approved. But Jason has been working on health department applications. And you can see here where the septic would be going, which we will be designing it for an additional bedroom. Even though they're not going to be using it as an additional bedroom, the health department will be considering it a one-bedroom. So we, we are currently finalizing those plans to go over to the health department pursuant on a possible review with both you and the planning department.
What's the percentage increase in the structure?
So the current structure is $1,296. And there's a minor correction, I sent this with the planning department. The, why we're here today, and there was a little back and forth last session, is it an accessory structure? Is it an accessory apartment? We deemed it's an accessory structure, which has to be, for code, 50 percent of the main house, right? So the main house is $1,296, and this current house is $1,260. So it's about this, almost the same size as the, the main house. But you can kind of see, excuse me, it's quite a small house.
I, I can't see you.
Sorry.
Can you move it back a little bit so we can see?
Yes.
Maybe you can see it.
There we go. But this is the existing home.
Right.
And this is, this is a deck, but this would be the footprint, it's under 1,000 square feet footprint, 998. So, and you can see that it's, you know, it's equivalent in size to the main, main house, but that's-
You're saying doubling the size?
Well, partly because the house is quite small.
You're doubling the size?
Yeah, yeah, it's about, it's almost equal to the main house size.
Thank you.
When you say the new building is, what did you say, 1,200 or something?
Uh, the new, it's 1,260.
What, what is included in that 1,260?
Yeah, so we included, I'll show you.
I think it's 998, not 1,260.
Well, it's the footprint.
It what?
I'm sorry, uh, the footprint, the footprint is 998.
It's two, it's two floors.
It's two stories. It's a little bit unusual because of the grade, so you can kind of see from this image even, we can go through the plans.
All right, so what's the square footage of it?
The, the footprint is 99, I'm sorry, the footprint is 9-
What's the total square?
1,260.
So the total square footage of the building is going to be 1,260?
Of area, yeah, internal area.
And 1,260?
1,260, correct, yeah.
Okay, not 998. And what's the original house, the existing house?
1,296.
1,296, so it's 30 feet shorter, so it's twice as, okay.
Yeah.
Because I got 998 here, I don't know how to, I, that's why it's, it's 1,260, that makes a difference. Now you said something about a bedroom, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, said something about a bedroom?
Yeah, so I want to just, we're, you know, we're always trying to be 100 percent open and clear about what we're doing. It's, while we're going to the health department for a septic design, I can show you the floor plans, but it's not going to be used as a bedroom, but Charity's office, for example, they would consider this structure of this size, the health department, to have a septic design that would allow for one bedroom. So while this building is not a bedroom, never going to be used as a bedroom space, that's not the intention of this structure, the health department, in order to have, because there's, there's a powder room and a bathroom in this building, in order to have allowable septic, they will consider, we're, we're building the septic design to allow for one bedroom.
Yeah, see, now, now we get to the question of accessory apartment.
Right.
You know, because we're talking about, so they, if we do, if you do it that way, the health department says it could be a one-bedroom, they could use it as accessory apartment. That's why it probably, when it came to us originally, the building inspector had it down as accessory apartment.
Right.
Permit, you know.
For all intensive purposes, I think, in my mind, either way, we have a variance, so I think I've-
Well, yeah, but it makes a difference.
Sure.
Okay, I mean, if you're going to go for accessory apartment, let's go for accessory apartment.
Great, yeah.
If you're going to go accessory building, let's go to accessory building. Because you go accessory building, you're talking like one-bedroom, nobody could live in there.
Right.
Okay, so, but you get a one-bedroom approved by the county, they can live in there. So it creates an issue for us, so, you understand what I'm saying, and the board members, you know.
Right, I mean, the health department considers any room over seven feet wide to be a bedroom, right?
Right, so-
Okay, so you, why identify yourself, please?
Jason Snyder with Beatty and Watson.
Okay.
Jason Snyder with Beatty and Watson. So because it has a kitchenette and a, and a bathroom-
Right.
-the health department is going to, is going to attribute a one, a, one potential bedroom associated with it regardless. And not only that, even if it were just, even if there were, even if it did not have a bathroom or did not have a kitchenette, and it just was a one-room office, we still have, we still have to attribute a, a design flow for, because it's going to have its own separate, if, right, if it has sewer and water service, we have to attribute some flow to it. So in those circumstances, we usually just do a one-bedroom design flow, 150 gallons per day.
No, I understand what you're saying, but what, once you get it approved for, for a one-bedroom-
Yeah.
And, and a kitchen, you got a kitchen and bath, it could be rented out.
Yeah.
That's the problem I have.
Right.
There's no, um-
Yeah, I wish you could, I wish you, honestly, you probably would have been better off going for an accessory apartment.
Right, I mean, on our applications, it's an accessory apartment. And then last meeting, we, we spoke and we thought it was an accessory structure. I honestly, um-
Yeah, if I can just add-
Sure.
You know, looking at the zoning code, section 175 dash 74, accessory structure includes, I mean, among other things, parking, storage, recreation, home occupation, and accessory apartment. So accessory apartment is included within the definition of an accessory structure. Whether it's an accessory apartment or an accessory structure, I understand what you're going to use it for, any way you slice it, you still need an area variance.
Correct, right.
Um, as I understand it, in the, you're in the Hamlet Residential Zoning District, and, you know, for the sake of argument, accessory structures are a permitted use in that district, even though you're telling us you're not going to use it for that. So what I'm just commenting on and advising the board is whether it's an accessory structure or it has a kitchenette and a bathroom and could be used as an accessory apartment, still, you still need an area variance.
Yeah.
That's-
Right, well, my question is, an accessory structure is not living area?
An accessory structure can include, under the definition, it can include an accessory apartment. I mean, you can have that under the code and in the Hamlet Residential District, it's a permitted use.
But then they should be applying for accessory apartment.
Which we, which we do actually, which we are applying for.
Well, yeah, I'm, well, they're telling us they're not using it as an accessory apartment, but it, it can include an accessory apartment because it's permitted as of right, but they still need an area variance. In other words, if they came to us, as I understand it, and, and that, hey, we, we want to put in the structure as an accessory apartment, we don't want it as a home office or for outside storage, it's the same, they would still need an area variance because their principal building is-
1,296.
1,296 square feet, and they're proposing a structure of 1,260 square feet.
1,260, which is-
So, in other words, as I understand it, the analysis doesn't change, you still need an area variance.
Does it? Because I, I thought, if you have, so you're, if, if we call it an, if it's an accessory apartment, you're limited to 800 square feet, two bedrooms, and 35, 35 percent of the primary residence, whereas with the accessory structure, you're, it's, it's 50 percent and 1,000 square feet, is that?
Well, you would still- Need a variance.
Right.
That's all I'm saying.
Right.
Whether, I mean, you're telling us it's, I mean, I'm looking at the code. You're proposing an accessory structure, correct?
Correct.
Um, just to make it simple, you're proposing an accessory structure, and the principal building is 1,296 square feet, and you're proposing a, your accessory structure, which you described as home office and storage, is 1,260 square feet, which is more than half the floor space of the principal building. So you're here before us for an area variance.
That's, that's a good breakdown, understanding, just by things, yes.
I guess, I guess the bottom line is, we can, we can, we can apply for, I mean, this is what they want to do, so we can apply for however you want it worded.
I'm, I'm just taking your application at, at face value. You're, it's a structure for overflow storage and a home office, which fits within the definition of an accessory structure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I don't mean to make this complicated, but in the definition of accessory structure, one of the things you can have in it is an accessory apartment.
Right.
And I understand your comments about the limitations of size of an accessory apartment, which you're not proposing. But even if hypothetically, you said, I want to have this as an accessory apartment, I mean, you're not saying that, you would still need an area variance because the structure wouldn't, you know, wouldn't comply with the dimensional limitations of accessory apartment either.
I mean, we can also have, we could have both, too. You can have, you can have an accessory structure with a home office, which is customary to the use of, of, of the primary residence, and also an accessory apartment in that accessory structure.
Yes, that's correct.
Right, so, yeah.
I mean, a lot of times people have, like, a lot of times people have like a, a barn with a, with a, with an apartment on the, on the, on the second floor.
Right.
So that, in that case, you have a garage, which is customary to the, to the, to the primary use of the, of the, of the primary residence, and then you have your, and then you have your apartment, which can be 800 square feet. So if you take all those together, you, you know, notwithstanding the restrictions of the, of the main residence, but-
Right.
So you could have more than 800 square feet-
Right.
-associated with that, with that structure.
Right, I understand. My, my only area of confusion is which way you should go with it, is what I'm trying to say, you know, because it's almost the same size as the house. What is it, 30, 30 feet small in a house, so you're building, it's almost, you know, it's almost the same size of the house that the house, correct?
Yes.
I see you looking at the ceiling, but I, I mean-
Yeah, I'm, I'm like, what I'm trying, I'm thinking.
The answer's on the ceiling, let me know, I'll look up.
So, I mean, I guess the point is also, it is, it is quite a bit, but it's also, I think it's also in, in conformance with, with the area.
Well, that's your opinion.
Well, how so?
Well, because there's other, there's other, along that stretch, those other houses to the, to the south have similar-
Is the, their structure is the same size of the house?
I don't, I don't, I'm not sure of the-
We were conscious of that when situating it, and it's hard, a little bit hard to see, but, good, I think, we'll just look at it. You can kind of see from here, this would be the street side. So the idea is by also situating it where we have it on the site, it's not, we're trying to make it not this huge structure sitting on top of a hill that's going to outsize. We want it to be architecturally appropriate and also neighborhood appropriate. The clients did bring pictures of some barns that are on their street, if you want to look at those, but it will not only fit with their site, but also be sort of a low-profile structure, not going to sit, you know, in this overwhelming manner towards the street. We've been very conscious of that from a design perspective. And also how it relates to the, the house, because it's an interesting design problem to solve, right? How do you build something that's not going to overwhelm this adorable cottage that has been in their house for 30 years? But, you know, once you need to put all the clearances and all the corridor space, whatever you need, it has to become a certain size.
But you have to understand, it is almost the same size as the house.
I, I get it, no.
We're talking about two houses on, on the same piece of-
I understand completely, and that's why we're here, to, to discuss it.
That's why the, the accessory apartment is small, you're right, because you only have so many square feet allowed for the accessory apartment, because they don't want, they don't want you building an accessory apartment the same size as your house.
Right, but a lot of times those are inside larger structures. So you, like, if you have a big barn, like Jason was saying, you can have an 800, you can allocate 800 square feet of that barn to be apartment space, which in this case, we're, we're counting, we're building a new structure, so we're counting the whole thing as that square footage, as opposed to taking a piece out of the building to make an apartment out of it.
Good, any of the board have any questions?
Yeah, just some clarification for me. You said the footprint of the proposed structure is just under 1,000 square feet.
That's correct.
So rough numbers, it has the potential of being 2,000 square feet, rough numbers. What's the 800, other 800 square feet being used for?
So, actually, let me show you the plan.
Yeah.
Again, it's partly because of the site and also how you, how you enter, but you can see, I'll go through the plans.
You can see here, you can take the microphone.
Okay, well, let me flip the, maybe I'll have Charity help me flip the-
It's supposed to like stand.
But you can see, yeah, here, I'll hold this.
It's okay. All right, yeah, slow, yeah, yeah.
So you can see here that you do enter through the second floor, which is, again, partly because, 100 percent because of the site conditions. And then you can see, switch this here a little bit.
At the road line, it's one.
At the, at the road line, it's one story, that's what I was saying. Yeah, so just go to the second floor.
Right.
Yeah, here we go. So the second floor is, here we go. So most of the second floor is just open, it's just a corridor going straight back to Charity's office.
Right.
So most of the second floor plate is not, it's not filled in, it's not, it's not two-floor plates continuous. We have a corridor going across, and then this is going to be her office.
That's where a solid bridge, that was going across.
Right, there's a, there's a little bridge.
There's no structure in there at all?
It's just going to be a, a handrail, a walk-in, like a walk-through, and that this will be open to below.
Mm-hmm.
So that, and then also, we are, you have a little exercise room slash more storage probably, we have the stair corridor going down. And then also, we, on the first level, we have this mechanical space. Honestly, a lot of this mechanical space not, may not be counted because the slope is coming in, and we might have ledge through, let's say 50 percent of this mechanical space, we're not sure. This is going to be this open area with that little kitchenette. There's no cooking element for the cook, kitchenette, we're not putting like a full-range or any, any kind of cooking element, it's just a refrigerator and sink.
No stove there?
No stove, yeah, no stove. And Charity's a writer, so there's going to be books, book, bookcases. And then this is the storage, and then this is the full bathroom back here. So a lot of it is circulation space, as you can see, you know, it's just like I said, like, we were, in order to get from one place to the other, the square footage does that up. But upstairs, you can see that line is, is not a full floor plate, if that follows.
The roof pitch, can you stand into the center of the roof pitch if you go into the attic?
Um, we're not really planning on any attic space, it's going to be equipment.
It's going to be cathedral ceilings.
It's going to be cathedral ceilings, and then, like, the bathrooms will be dropped, and then upstairs, partly dropped for just equipment to be placed up there.
Okay.
No, no attic space.
Any other questions, anybody? Is there anybody in the audience that'd like to speak regarding this?
Yeah.
Yes, just go up by the mic and tell us who you are, please.
Hi, William Felder, 92 Lower Station Road. We bought our house in 2014, 2015 timeframe, lived there with my wife and two kids. We're the, we're the house right up the hill, so we, we pretty much occupy the entire uphill property of the construction site. And from a early stage in their thought process as to what they were going to do, they approached us and sort of walked us through the whole idea and the entire plan. And given the fact that, you know, I live in a barn, first of all, so, very familiar with the, the, the layout of the, of the neighborhood, and also the fact that they've done such an incredible job with the renovation of their existing house to fit with the character of the neighborhood, it's a beautiful property, and they've, they haven't done any of the things they would be allowed to do to increase their living and storage space inside their house, to maintain the integrity of the structure from what it's been, for the entire time it's been in their family. And they've designed this new project with our best intentions in mind to make sure that it doesn't obstruct any of, you know, the views from our property, it's as un-offensive to, to our sightlines, and to the detriment of the, of the things that they could do with their property, really thinking about the historical nature of the area and, and our best interests. So hugely supportive of the project, and it would be like a big loss for our neighborhood should they not be able to live the lives that, you know, they live with their three kids and our two kids planning all that stuff. So would hate to lose them, and I think this is an important thing for their family. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience that'd like to speak regarding this? Any, any questions for any board members? All right, I just want to go over the, well, I guess I'll close the public hearing, then we'll go over the, the factors. Do I get a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll sub move.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is closed, and I want to go into the, the five factors. What the five factors are used for is the, the board to consider the application, whether we grant it or not. Now, we asked, the five factors ask you questions and you answer them. First one is, will an undesirable change be produced in a character, neighborhood, or will a detriment to nearby property be created by granting of the area variance? We do not believe your answer was, we do not believe the accessory structure will negatively affect the neighborhood. Along 77 Lower Station Road, the few houses there in origination have currently very similar structures that were served as examples of what we're hoping to build. Second question is, can the benefit sought be achieved by some method feasible pursuant other than area variance? Through the interior floor plan configuration and existing site conditions, an addition to home would not be easily architectural feasible. The client is hoping to gain extra storage and recreational space along with a small office in a way that is cost-effective and will not negatively affect the existing architect of the main residence or the site. Number three question is, is the requested area variance substantial? The square foot we're asking for is approximately 500 square feet above the 800 allowable. Explain that to me.
So, initially, filling out this application, before we had some clarity on, is this an accessory apartment, is this an accessory structure, we did fill a lot of this out as an accessory apartment. So some of these questions are kind of moot at this point. To explain what we're saying here, regardless of whether it's an accessory apartment or accessory structure, yes, the area variance is substantial because we are asking for more than is allowed per code.
Okay. Will proposed variance have an adverse effect or impact on a physical or environmental conditions in a neighborhood or district? And your answer is, we do not feel it will have a negative environmental or physical effect on existing conditions. We have, we have provided a steep slope analysis and are happy to forward any suggestion migration the board would recommend for approximately 500 square foot of the land that will be affected. Well, that's going to be the, up to the planning board.
That's right.
Okay, now you understand if this is granted, it's no building permit, okay?
Yes.
You have to wait for the planning board.
Yes, we had a pre-app meeting and-
Now, if the planning board turns you down, then you're going to have to rethink what you're going to do.
Yeah.
Okay?
Understood.
Five, is your alleged difficulty self-created? The existing home is small, but serves our family of five, well, we're happy with the size of the home, but we do wish to expand the footprint. Basically answered all these questions, to this last one is yes, okay, it's self-created, yeah, because you want to do it.
Yeah.
Okay, you know what I'm trying to say, so you're going to put a lot of words in here, but it's, you know, okay, so we'll go with self-created, all right?
Fair enough, yeah.
Because it's something that you want to do, and I understand that.
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody have questions for the board?
No.
Okay, so at this point-
I have one question as far as the planning board, obviously pursuant to what happens tonight, but we're going to go to the planning board, they're going to have, be focused on the special use permit for the steep slope analysis. I guess we can lay it out, but if, if we do get denied, then that's it, or we come back to you, or what's the net, what would be the following?
Well, if, if the planning board denies you, if there's a slope, you're going to have to redesign it.
Okay.
You know.
Go to the slope.
And go back to us, sure, to somehow, to, I don't know if you could get around the slope or how else you could do it.
Okay.
You'll have to use your architectural genius to-
There we go.
-come up with an answer to that one.
Okay.
I don't know, I don't know how to tell you with that one, but that, because if they don't give it to you, we can't give you a building permit.
I hear you, yeah.
You understand that, okay.
Okay, that makes sense.
All right. Any other questions? No other questions? Okay, I'll call for a vote at this time, Mr. Seston?
I vote to approve.
Mr. Lynn?
I'll vote to approve.
I'll vote to approve. I vote to approve.
I vote to, and I vote to approve.
And I vote to approve.
Okay, all right, so you're all set, but you're not set.
I heard you, yes.
Okay, I don't know what to tell you.
No, I understand, appreciate it, and we have to obviously get health department approval.
Right, right. You can always come back to us, okay?
Yeah.
If, you know, if the planning board has an issue or something like that, then you could do a little, I don't know what you can do, do a little magical, magical lines there.
Absolutely, we can always, you know, put another pencil to the paper, but I appreciate it. It's been very reassuring for us to meet with you and just to understand that we could, that this is feasible. So thank you so much for everything tonight.
You're all set, good night now.
Okay, thank you.
You're all set. You're welcome, okay.
Thank you.
Well, your neighbor likes it, so, you know, we can't, we can't.
And the words fast.
All right, is there any old business? Any new business? No. Now, the board doesn't meet in August, so the next meeting will be September 12th. Let me make sure, let me make sure that, hold on. Right, yeah.
You have no new business by your meeting.
Huh?
I'm just talking.
Oh, my sure new business is coming in before September. All right, next meeting will be Monday, September 12th.
Second?
On favor? Okay, that's it, thank you.